...than anybody on the planet, including China, which has 1.3 billion people. And they don't have as many people in prison as us. We criminalize and we throw kids away and their lives never, ever come back once they get caught into that criminal justice system. Frankly, what we need are politicians in Washington that finally get up and say, "You know, those drug laws of the 70s and 80s are bad laws. They should treat that as health issues, addiction issues, not criminal issues." Ever since they put those tough drug laws in place, the prisons have mushroomed. Mushroom to the degree where we spend more money on prisons than we do on schools, more monies on prisons than we do on after-school programs, more money on schools than we do on anything else regarding our youth. It's ridiculous, it's absurd, it's insane. Why do you think gangs exist and exist in such large numbers? Well, because you've set up territories and you sell illegal drugs, you're able to fund yourself, you're able to feel a little good, it's better than making $7.50 an hour in some people's minds. It's an alluring thing of insanity. These drug laws have caused an underground, have caused a criminal industrial system. It is actually sick with what it has done. What we need to do is take a deep breath, revisit our drug laws, because once you get rid of those crazy laws, the kids can't form gangs to sell illegal drugs to begin with. There'll be no incentive to fill up your wallet with money. They could much rather go to college or trade school or after-school programs. Of course, Ms. Hahn's ballot initiative is a no-brainer. I mean, my God, if we can't do prevention and intervention programs, what good are we as a nation?
Speaking for a second time, Tony Cardenas addresses the cost of the program and summarizes the resolution.
This is not new funding. This is going to take away from other funding and is going to tie the hands of local government and the state of California to do things strategically instead of just do things piecemeal like this initiative talks about. I urge my council colleagues to please, please vote for this resolution, which basically states the City Council of the City of Los Angeles actually opposes this Safe Neighborhoods, so-called Safe Neighborhoods Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. There are no further speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you please review what is before us before we take a vote?
The matter before council is the communication from the chair which opposes this initiative.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Nine ayes, one no.
Thank you very much.
L.A. City View is the government access cable channel for the City of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. If you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see on Channel 35 or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. We invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can also watch the replay of all the week's meetings beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Weekend Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. On Sunday at 9:30 a.m. That concludes our program for the week ending June 13, 2008. On behalf of Jack Popejoy and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Rochelle Gouel. Thank you for watching, and please do join us for the next Council Week in Review.
And it's Takashi Saito, number 44 of the Los Angeles Dodgers, approaching the mound. This All-Star relief pitcher is the 2008 honorary for the Hope of Los Angeles Award for the City of L.A.'s Asian and Pacific Islander American Heritage Month. Takashi Saito is the sixth Japanese player in Dodger history and the 20th Japanese pitcher to earn a victory in Major League Baseball. Saito made his debut in the Major League on April 9, 2006, and finished the month with a 2-0 record and a .69 ERA. On May 15, 2006, Saito took over as the closer for the Dodgers and recorded his first Major League save. Saito is known for three pitches: a tight fastball in the low-to-mid 90 mph range, a sharp slider that he uses as a strikeout pitch, and a slow curveball that he uses as a change-up. Drafted in the first round by the Yokohama Taio Whales in 1991, Saito played 13 seasons in Japan's Central League, compiling a record of 87 and 80. Saito had his most dominant season in 1996, striking out a total of 206 batters in only 196.2 innings. In 1998, he drove the Yokohama Bay Stars to their first Japan Series championship in 38 years. One of baseball's top relief pitchers, Saito is a candidate for the prestigious National League Cy Young Award. He was also named to the National League All-Star Team for the first time, becoming the sixth native of Japan to appear in this Midsummer Classic. Record-breaking relief pitcher for the Los Angeles Dodgers, a living inspiration to hundreds of thousands of Angelinos, Takashi Saito is honored with the Hope of Los Angeles Award in 2008 for Asian and Pacific Islander American Heritage Month.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council meeting for June 20, 2008. We're here in John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Once a month, we get out to Van Nuys City Hall as well to bring our City Council meetings closer to all Angelinos. But we want to welcome members of the public that are here in council chambers and those who are watching on Channel 35, which broadcasts us live every council meeting and rebroadcast those meetings in the evening as well. Our meetings are available online at lacity.org through webcast, and also our archived meetings of the past are available online there as well. And finally, you can always use your phone and call (213) 621-CITY and listen in on any of our council meetings or any of our committee meetings as well. So three ways to follow your Los Angeles City Council. I want to thank the members of the City Council who are here pursuing to council rules on time: Councilmembers Parks, Perry, Rosendahl, and Zine. The following council members are not here yet, and we need them to establish a quorum and begin our official business. Councilmember Alarcon, Councilmember Cardenas, Councilwoman Hahn, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Wesson, if you'll please join us as soon as possible. It's now after the hour, and according to council rules, you should be here on time for beginning the meetings. Each Friday, we begin with presentations before the official matters that we conduct to thank members of the public and congratulate folks on different accomplishments in the Los Angeles area. And we'll begin those presentations shortly. But again, I'd like to ask those following council members to come down: Alarcon, Cardenas, Hahn, Reyes, and Wesson. Please join us as soon as you can. Thank you. This is the second quorum call for council members Alarcon, Cardenas, Hahn, Reyes, and Wesson to please join us as soon as possible before we can begin the meeting. Thank you. This is the third quorum call for council members Wesson, Weiss, Alarcon, Cardenas, Hahn, and Reyes. Please join us. Mr. Cardenas, thank you for joining us. Mr. Alarcon, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Wesson. I'm going to have the sergeants-at-arms to help us track down Mr. Weiss, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Alarcon, and Mr. Reyes, please. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Waiting, Mr. Wesson, thank you. One more, and we can begin. Mr. Alarcon and Mr. Reyes. As soon as we have one of them here, we will begin. This is our final quorum call for Mr. Alarcon and Mr. Reyes to join us. We need you to establish a quorum and begin the meeting. Mr. Alarcon and Mr. Reyes, if you'll immediately come down to council chambers. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grill, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Zine moves, Ms. Perry seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay. Mr. Parks moves, Mr. Alarcon seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well.
Mr. President, would you like to go through public comments?
Let's run through the agenda real quick, and then we'll call on Mr. Rosendahl for our first presentation in just a moment. Mr. Rosendahl, we're going to run through the agenda, so the first presentation, but if there's anything you'd like to call special, let us know as well. First items, please.
14 and 17.
Item number one is an item noticed for a public hearing.
Okay. The card on one. Okay. We'll open and close the public hearing. Let's go ahead and do not leave. Oh, we might have 12 members. Well, no, actually, we're not going to. So let's go ahead and open the roll on one, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That will go over one week for a second reading of the ordinance. Next items, please.
Next are items two through 11. Those are items which public hearings have been held. There is a request to continue item number 11 to June 27.
Okay. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing item 11 till the 27th of June? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and do that. Any other specials, colleagues, two through 10? Two through 10? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next are items 12 through 18, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. There are cards on item number 14 and 17.
Okay. We have cards from 14 and 17. I think 17, there's a motion to receive and file. No? Okay. We'll call that special for a card from the public. Mr. Cardenas? Okay, 17 as well for Mr. Cardenas. We'll op-- sorry? Oh, for Bernard. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. We'll open and close the other public hearings. Any specials? 12 through 18? Not? Let's go ahead and take up the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll. We'll come back, we'll get five. And tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, those are approved. We can go to continuation agenda.
Item number 19 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call that special? Number 19?
Twenty, continue for one week.
19, anybody special? If not, we'll go ahead and 20. Sorry, there's been a move to continue that for one week. If there's no objection, that will be till the 27th of June. All right. 19, nobody can call special? We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. That is approved. If we can call the roll on the special meeting, please.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grill, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, eleven members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. First items, please.
Items 21 through 22 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay. We'll move both reports on item 22. Anybody wishing to call 21 or 22 special? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items--
We have 22 fourth with--
22 without objection, fourth with. Next items?
Items 23 through 24 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Any objection to consideration? Seeing none, those are both before us. We do not have public comment cards, so we'll open and close the public hearings. 23 or 24, anybody wishing to call special? Seeing none, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, those are approved as well. If we could reconsider item five, please? Please open the roll on reconsideration of five, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And we will hold that special for Mr. Rosendahl. Okay?
Mr. President--
Eight, nine, fourth with, without objection, please. Yes, Madam Clerk?
The special meeting needs to be adjourned.
Okay. We'll adjourn the special meeting and go back to the regular meeting, and we'll-- Mr. Rosendahl was already with his presentation, so we'll recognize Mr. Rosendahl. And 19, fourth with, without objection as well. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. President, and good morning, colleagues, and good morning to the public in, in the chambers here and to those on the other side of Channel thirty-five. I'd like to ask Bill and Cindy Simon to come on up next to me. And before we start the presentation, it's Bill Simon's birthday, so happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, Bill Simon, happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
And frankly, we are very glad that Bill Simon was born, uh, fifty-seven years ago today, because this is a man who is now married to a great lady, Cindy, as a dynamic duo have done an awful lot to make the world a better place. And what we're going to talk about today is an incredible program that he created and his wife in nineteen ninety-nine called Sound Body, Sound Mind. It was founded in nineteen ninety-nine to help reach public high school students lost in a system with decreasing budgets and lack of focus on physical education. Sound Body, Sound Mind has been established in fifty Los Angeles County high schools and reaches over forty-five thousand students each year. Eight of these schools are schools with special needs. And Sound Body, Sound Mind plans to expand to fifty middle schools by the year two thousand and eleven. Programs like this are so necessary in a day and an age when so many of our youth suffer from a lack of nutrition and exercise, while consistently being bombarded by television ads promoting an unhealthy lifestyle. Remember all the soda in the, uh, schools that was put in there to peddle at, which, thank God, the school board has taken that out, because that is how diabetes starts with young kids? Due to the budget constraints, LAUSD schools are overcrowded, leaving little room for activity space. Physical education programs are usually the first to be affected when funds are tight. According to the two thousand and eight Children's Now report card, more than three million children in California, that is thirty-three percent, are overweight or obese. Recent report found that almost twenty-three percent of the LAUSD students in the fifth, seventh, and ninth grades are already obese. Children and adolescents who are overweight have a greater risk of developing type-two diabetes, asthma, and orthopedic problems. They are more likely to have increased blood pressure and high cholesterol levels, and they are more likely to be have, have behavioral problems and depression. It's reasons like this that Sound Body, Sound Mind is needed to improve the health and lives of our youth. I am very proud to support them. In fact, I went to a fundraiser they had at the Beverly Hilton Hotel the other day, packed, where they raised a million dollars for the cause. And so I want to honor the Simons, both of them, by presenting this certificate, uh, colleagues, and thank them for a huge difference they're making in our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Bill, and thank you, uh, members of the city council. It's our pleasure to be here today. My wife, Cindy, and I are so grateful to have been able to be, uh, the founders of this great program nine years ago. We started very small in our hometown high school, uh, Pacific Palisades, a town that, that Bill represents, and Bill, you're doing a great job.
Thank you, sir.
And, uh, everybody in the Palisades loves you. And then over the, over the years, as you might suspect, other towns said, hey, how about us? How about us? And so after nine years, we're now in fifty different high schools. We're just very grateful. And as Bill mentioned, we had a, a little event a couple of months ago, and we were able to raise some money. So now we're going to be able to go into fifty middle schools. And I can't think of anything that's more important at this point in our schools than making sure that our kids are fit to learn. And in order to be fit to learn, you've got to have a sound body as well as a sound mind, and that's the basis of our program, to make sure that the kids have an opportunity to have a workout, have an opportunity to be fit. Because we know that in times of budget shortfalls, of which we're in the middle of one right now, the first places that things get cut are the arts, music, and physical fitness. So we want to fill in that gap in the physical fitness area, and we want to be dedicated to the long term so that our kids can feel good about their bodies and their minds. Thank you very much again for recognizing our beloved program, and God bless all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Garcetti, you'll be our next presentation.
Good morning, Madam President. Mr. Reyes and I are here. If we can ask all the Aztecs to come over and join us here. Come on into the, into the aisle, join us. Aztecs Rising, let's give them a hand. I want to thank Councilmember Reyes's staff and, uh, Billy Jun Londoño, who's right here, and Mitch O'Farrell from my district office, who this morning, at a breakfast earlier, certificates were handed out to forty-three individuals who recently completed a rigorous training program so they can qualify to become professional firefighters. Nothing ruins lives, properties and lives the way that fires do, and no one is more committed than these young people who are behind me, uh, to not only improving their lives, but protecting our lives as well. Many dozens of young men and women who have completed this program in years past are now professional firefighters. This is the first step on the way to a career of protecting Californians, protecting Americans, and protecting our communities. And many of these individuals have come a really long way in their lives. They've faced personal challenges along the way, in their neighborhoods, in their families, um, in this city, and it is a testament to their character and their strength that they are here today. We honor them all. I'd like to commend Jose Luis Perez and his time, uh, sorry, and his team for administering the time and this program. And I'd like to have Executive Director Enrique Hurtado say a couple of words, uh, after Mr. Reyes speaks as well. Enrique was recently flown to New York City. I think most of you know him in here as, uh, one of the founders of Aztecs, and he was honored by Hallmark Channel's Hero Program by Regis Philbin for his dedication to creating the Aztecs Rising program. Uh, this program will air on Friday, June twenty-seventh, so put it on your calendars on the Hallmark Channel at five P.M. And I want to thank Enrique and all of the participants in an economic development program that my office has been working on with him as well. A program that offered employment to a few dozen individuals over a four-month period where we were able to clear brush, um, prevent fire, do the maintenance work throughout the thirteenth council district along the L.A. River and other places among abandoned and neglected properties throughout communities in my district. So when the fire season is here, and now it is here, unfortunately, we've seen, uh, we'll be even more appreciative for the fires that you've prevented. It's impossible to quantify and to count how many fires you guys prevented, but we know that you will have made our neighborhoods safer. So, um, I'll hand it over to my partner here. I know Mr. Weezer, who is, uh, out of the country representing our city right now, um, also works very closely with Aztecs. I think all of you around this horseshoe know their great work, uh, but Mr. Reyes has been one of the strongest supporters, and I believe the headquarters is in his district. So, uh, Mr. Reyes from the first district to give his good wishes as well.
Thank you, Council President. In the late nineties, there was a, um, a very terrible shooting in Cypress Park, and we had committee members show up. And this young man by the name of Enrique Hurtado stands up and starts talking to the youth, speaking to them, telling them about why things should change, how they could change. And so the notion of gang intervention, I saw directly, and being able to communicate and see other young people right in the eye and tell them, you matter, you're worth something, you deserve better. And many of our institutions are failing. There's these huge holes in our education system. Forty-nine percent of our youth are dropping out. And we have these safety nets, they like to call the Aztec Fire Crew and Aztec Rising, that are catching these young people falling through the cracks, and they're holding them up, and they're showing them what it means to have self-esteem, what it means to feel honorable for having earned a good, honest dollar, to go back to their families and say, I'm making something of myself. So the graduates, I'm hoping that this is the first step of many more steps. I'm hoping that I can see you in that robe, in that graduation day, with real career plans. I'm hoping that in your mind, you can see yourself in that uniform, giving back to this community, to this country, and those that are around you, your neighbors, your family, those who think they don't have hope, they can see you as that ray of hope for their life. So I thank you for that. Thank you, Enrique. Thank you, Councilman Garcetti, and thank you, council. You've been a strong supporter. They need more of this in these trying times. So thank you so much. Congratulations.
And Enrique, this is for the Aztec Fire Crew sixty-three. Congratulations from me, Councilmember Reyes, and the mayor as well on here. Great job, everybody, and love to hear a few words from you.
Mr. Miss, before you speak, Ms. Han would like to say a few words. Ms. Han? Ms. Han?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise and also give my congratulations to the Aztec Fire Crew grads here today. Um, and, uh, I interviewed Enrique on Channel thirty-five, so it wasn't exactly a Regis Philbin interview, but, uh, I remember that that show was very powerful because, uh, we began to talk about real alternatives for our young people, uh, particularly from joining gangs. And Aztecs Rising is exactly that kind of program, uh, that takes our young people who, as Eric said, uh, really come with enormous obstacles and challenges. It's sort of from, from adversity to resilience. Uh, and you get these young men and some young women, uh, to, uh, really get in a program that has a lot of discipline and, and creates a lot of positive values, but as, more importantly, trains our young people, uh, to have the kind of skills that will pay off someday in a really good job, uh, hopefully with L.A. City Fire Department. Uh, but I really wanted to congratulate all you today and really tell those who are watching. You know, we could criticize sometimes in Los Angeles for, uh, supporting and funding programs that people say don't really work, uh, and that we're wasting our money. This is a program that works because we know every single one of you who make the choice to stay with, uh, this program really, um, are on your way to, uh, being a great part of our communities, our neighborhoods, and our society. So, thank you. Uh, these are the kinds of programs we want to see getting more funding, uh, in the future so we can even reach more young people, uh, to have this kind of a life. Thank you, Enrique. Thank you, all of you. Congratulations to all of you for graduating this program. We're very proud of you.
Mr. Cardenas, you're next speaker.
Thank you very much. Uh, I just want to commend you, uh, for your great organization and all the wonderful work that you've done. Uh, to me, it, it exemplifies what America is. America has bragged to the world for a couple of hundred years that we are the country of second chances. We are the country that if you're willing to put your sweat, blood, and tears into your life, into your future, into your community, you will be rewarded with a job. You will be rewarded with being, being able to be part of society, being part of your community. And Aztecs Rising is doing exactly that, about as basic and rudimentary as anything we have in this country. And I think we're fortunate to have you here in Los Angeles. It is unfortunate that we haven't recognized you enough. It's unfortunate that we have not given you the resources that you deserve to have so you can do this ten times over. And one of the things that I want to remind people of Los Angeles is take a good look at who we're honoring today, because this community that we're honoring, the individuals that we're honoring, unfortunately, society is too ready to waste fifty thousand dollars a year to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year when we throw away our youth and we just think that the only thing we can do with them is incarcerate them. This program only costs but a few thousand dollars a year per person, and we don't throw the money away. We invest the money in human beings. And the more important thing about it is, all we're doing is giving them an environment so that they can be the best that they can be. And that's one of the things that I appreciate about, appreciate about Aztecs Rising is because you are actually reminding all of America, you're reminding all Angelenos, you're reminding all of us taxpayers, that you do not have to be born in this country with a silver spoon in order for you to earn the right to carry a golden shovel, in order for you to have the right to have a job, in order for you to have the right to prove that you have value in your community and you're willing to be somebody in your community. All we need to do is afford people an opportunity. To me, that's the basic element of what this country stands for, and I want to thank you for bringing that about and to do it on a shoestring budget. You've been doing it on a minimal basis, but we need to figure out a way in this city to bring you to a point where you can do this ten times over and a hundred times over. We need to make that commitment, and you happen to be honored by the organization, by the Council of Los Angeles that needs to be able to do that. We need to figure out a way to grow your organization. So my commitment to you is that I'm going to continue to try to figure out how to do that. Thank you very much for your wonderful work.
Mr. Alarcon.
I, I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Cardenas. We, Tony and I were talking just before, you know, this year has been a year of studying gang violence. And frankly, I get, I get tired of studying gang violence. Uh, we, we do it in many respects to patronize folks, to give them the impression that, that we have to define gangs, gang violence in such a way that it has to be academically understood, otherwise they don't get it. But those of us who have worked in and around gangs for a number of years, we don't need any more studies. This program works. It works because it challenges these young people to do something that's harder than being a gang member. It challenges them to go out there and put out fires, and, and maybe they'll come back and put out fires in our neighborhoods too, because they have a way to, to a solution to a productive activity, and that's why this program is essential. My father was in the California Conservation Corps. I didn't know what it was, but all through my childhood, he used to talk about the CCs. I didn't know what that was. I thought it was something on the sea, but it turned out that it was the California Conservation Corps. My father worked out into, in the forest, clearing, brush, and doing all that stuff. And, and you know, it wasn't a second thought of, of his to get into criminal activity like some of his friends ended up, uh, doing. So, we need to build more programs that put the challenges to these kids, not patronize them, not patronize them and, and, and put them in some mental health program that, that's going to spin them around like a top, or frankly, the gang members will spin the counselor around like a top. Um, but put them in programs that challenge them physically, uh, but also give them the, in doing so, the mental strength to take on society's challenges and do a better job and have success. So I want to commend, uh, your organization for the tremendous connection that you've made. It's very simple. Go fight fires, and you'll probably not get involved in criminal activity or gang activity in the future because, uh, you think you're pretty tough after you beat a fire. So, good luck to all of you. I hope that our words don't, don't, aren't premature. Uh, I expect that each and every one of you is going to be a success. Uh, you are leaders within your own sphere of influence in your neighborhood. I hope you use that influence to, uh, inform younger people to take the right path. Uh, not that it's easy, but that it's the right path and that they will have much more success in doing so. Congratulations and continued success.
Thank you very much. Now, back to our presentation.
Thank you, Councilman Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Council President Garcetti, and Reyes. Thank you very much for those kind words. Um, as we talk about gang intervention, uh, my field is also gang intervention, gang prevention, and also with the Fire Crew, I could give them an option for them to leave that environment and become professionals. And when we talk about heroes, these are the heroes right here. They're, they're the people that are going to be saving us from fires. Aztec Class Two Thousand Eight, Crew Sixty-three. And also, I also wanted to recognize our colleagues, our sister Fire Crew that was established last year, also with the United States Forest Service in San Bernardino. We have another crew. The Aztecs started in ninety-four. Uh, the, uh, Front Country Crew Six started in, in two thousand and seven, and actually, right now, they're fighting fire. They hit their first fire already. I have a group of twenty men-- fighting fire. They hit their first fire already. I have a group of 20 men and women out there in San Bernardino covering that area also. So we’re creating finding jobs for them, opportunities for them to be out there. And as you speak, Councilman Cardenas, there is opportunity, you know, I know you guys have the valley, the foothills. If there’s anything that these guys could go out there and do, or we could recruit people from those areas also. But we have a big forest. We have Sequoia, Los Palos, that’s the forest, all the way to Cleveland. There’s a lot of stuff to do. And I think when the fire season starts, you know, it’s hot, all that grass needs to be cut, you know, those homes need to be protected. And I would like to thank Councilman Reyes and Garcetti for giving us opportunity and keeping these guys, when the Forest Service is not utilizing us, keeping us busy in the city. I think we need a little bit more of that, because I tend to lose a lot of people when I don’t keep them busy. I ask them to come and give back to the community. That’s their motto. Give back to the community, but also, I need to put some money on their pockets. Providing those jobs mean a lot to them, supporting their families and supporting themselves. So like that, we don’t see them go back into all the stuff. But I would like to acknowledge PHFE Management Solutions. We have a great team supporting us. There are fiscal agency, Rochelle, Cindy, and Sandra here. And usually, there are people in the background just helping us. Can we give my hand, please? And also, that’s the staff that we have working to make these programs happen, you know. Some of them get up early in the morning. I’ve been doing it for a lot of years, but sometimes, you know, I got other meetings. I don’t get up at 5:00 in the morning like these guys do. But since, sometimes I go out there with them, and it’s a good thing. But the staff that we have, I think they have it in their hearts. And our reward is to see these guys be successful, to leave everything behind, become role models with their families, their parents. I’m pretty sure the parents that are here, they feel very proud. And I was just listening to a guy, thinking, “This is the first certificate I ever got. But look, this is where I’m a wildland firefighter now, and I’m being recognized by the city council and for everything that they’re doing.” I go, “Well, this is the first step. This is the first step. You are going to become more,” and this is just a start. And there’s a lot more things to learn with the Forest Service. And also, with the Forest Service and the City Fire Department, we’re going to be here. The Forest Service had, the personnel from Forest Service had an accident. They’re well. They just couldn’t make it. The heart got real in the way over here. So, just to let them know, in behalf of the Forest Service, congratulations. Aztec Fire Crew 2008. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our next presentation will be by Mr. Zine.
Mr. Cardenas?
Yes, Madam President. Item 19, I just want to make sure that we clarify that what was moved was the committee report, or the report that was made to committee.
The recommendations contained in the motion?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Madam President. If I can have Lieutenant Blake, Detective Sausse, and Sergeant Ingram join me up here, please. Thank you. This was brought to us by West Valley LAPD. We’re going to recognize some citizens that went above and beyond in assisting the Los Angeles Police Department in apprehension, conviction, and ultimate incarceration of some criminals in the West Valley area. What occurred is, Ms. Torres observed a neighbor’s front window smashed. She immediately phoned her spouse, who had been leaving his residence. Observed suspects exiting through the front door of the neighbor’s residence carrying multiple black jackets. They noticed that the resident was on vacation, and they did not recognize the individuals leaving their residence with the jackets. The individual split, split, using police talk here. The suspects fled the scene and walked to a bus stop. Individual neighbors then followed in the vehicle, got out of the vehicle, and approached the suspects with the goods in hand. And the suspects then wanted to sell the stolen jackets for $40. Ultimately, the police were called. Residents came about, identified the individuals as the suspects who committed this residential burglary. And due to the effectiveness of the witnesses, the cooperation, the police investigation, the felony residential burglary charge were filed with the district attorney. All the victim’s property was recovered and returned to the owner. Additional stolen property narcotics, rock cocaine was also discovered in ultimate search. And the suspects admitted to the crime during a formal interview after receiving their Miranda warning. The suspects have been convicted and received two years for the residential burglary charge. We want to acknowledge the individuals who were good neighbors, who called the police, who got involved, and who helped put these individuals in jail and return all the stolen property. We have with us today Jorge Solis, George Solis, who is one of the individual, come on up, come on up. Is that you? Okay. Congratulations. We have Mark Berkowitz, who’s also a participant in the apprehension of the individuals who committed the crime. Richard Teigen. How about Alex Darson? I guess he didn’t arrive this morning. And Adriana Torres. Oh, you folks are here?
Alex Darson.
Alex Darson, thank you. Richard? Is Richard here? Richard, okay. I thought you were all folks in front. And Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Okay, these are the folks that were involved in this. They obviously are good neighbors. And what they did was have all the property recovered, the individuals arrested, going away for two years to the state prison. So when people want to commit residential burglary and take goods away, remember that oftentimes, you have good neighbors who watch out for each other. And in this particular case, these neighbors did watch out for their other neighbors who were on vacation, and put these folks where they belong, in jail. So congratulations to each and every one of you for going the extra mile and helping. And I’m sure if it happened to your residents, the residents who were the victims of this would have done the same. At least, we hope they would do the same. And we hope that all Angelinos will participate, helping the police bring criminal activity to an end. And Lieutenant, a couple comments from you?
No, we truly appreciate all of the active involvement. We couldn’t do this without a partnership with our community members. And without them taking the time to call and be good witnesses, this would not have been a successful arrest and prosecution.
Thank you. So let’s hear it for the first group being recognized from the West Valley LAPD.
Now, Mr. Zine, before you leave, Mr. Cardenas would like to say-
We have another one, Tony, if we can hold on a minute. We have another crime buster that Detective Sasha is going to discuss. This is the first face. You can stay up here. We got a second face coming in. Detective Sasha, West Valley LAPD.
I’m here today to recognize Mr. Richard Teigen. He became an important part of an investigation, a kidnap investigation. Back in February of this year, Pierce College student was kidnapped at gunpoint and taken to a local bank. Mr. Teigen, who happened to be in the bank at the time, realized something was wrong, something didn’t feel right, exited the bank, observed one of the male suspects running through an alley, and two additional suspects in a car parked in the parking lot of the bank. Mr. Teigen didn’t just call 911. He actually went and confronted one of the suspects and exchanged words, keeping them there at the scene a little longer until police sirens and a helicopter was heard overhead, at which time, the third suspect fled on foot. A large perimeter was established, and Mr. Teigen stayed present during approximately two hours, maybe three hours, while the search took place, which resulted in the location of the three suspects. And Richard also identified all three as the ones involved in the kidnapping. So we’d just like to thank him for his involvement in that. He’s a very important part. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody want to say something?
Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you, Councilmember Zine, for honoring these community heroes. And I say that because in what you’ve done, you’ve actually deterred or prevented perhaps dozens, if not maybe as much as 100 crimes in the future. I think I’d like, if you wouldn’t mind, one of the officers to answer my question. And that is, for example, when it comes to residential burglaries, if there’s a residential burglary, say, on a certain house, on a certain street, does that tend to be the only burglary by those perpetrators? Or do they tend to be three, four, five, maybe a dozen? If they don’t get caught, they just keep going on and on and on? And sometimes, even if it goes on long enough, they’ll even break into the same house, maybe a year later, what have you, and come back around? Does that tend to happen?
Councilman, you’re absolutely correct. Most burglars that we do catch in instances of this, generally speaking, we will clear a number of different DR numbers, which are crimes, from just one burglar. Usually, the clearances are up there in the teens, the twenties. Every now and then, we get a prolific burglar who’s responsible for 60, 70, 80 burglaries in a certain area. So when we do catch one burglar, we’re clearing a huge amount of crime off the mat.
Thank you for reminding the public of that, because I was approached at a community event by a woman who was pretty upset. She said, “What are you going to do about it? Somebody broke into my home. They stole our jewelry.” And after talking to her for a couple minutes, I said, “Have there been other burglaries in your neighborhood?” And she looked at me like I had a crystal ball. She goes, “Yeah,” because she didn’t tell me her address. And I said, “You probably have.” She said, “Yeah, they broke into my neighbor’s house across the street, around the corner.” I said, “What you need to do, the best thing for you and your community, is you need to have like a neighborhood watch. You need to look out for each other. And then, when you see that person, let us know. Then the police will investigate. They’ll catch that person.” But unless the eyes and ears, the people who live in that neighborhood, don’t tell us what they see, it’s very, very hard to catch them. The only way we can catch them otherwise, they have to be in the act, which is, you know, the law of averages are, it’s very hard for us to do that. But when the community comes together and they start giving us information, before you know it, we get them. And the thing is, like you said, you may find out that that person was responsible for maybe 10, 20, 30 burglaries, but at the same time, if we don’t catch them, a year later, that’s another 20, 30 burglaries that they committed. If we don’t ever catch them, maybe it’s 20, 30 burglaries a year. And that’s one of the things that I think is important for us to say thank you to the people in the community who took matters into your own hands. You didn’t take the law into your own hands. You just gave us enough information so our law enforcement can do their job and save the anguish and the agony of your neighbors in your community. So thank you very, very much for your duty to your community, and thank you so much for doing the right thing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
Let me add that Lieutenant Blake just informed me that the individuals apprehended have a lengthy history of arrests for burglary. This was not the first time that they’ve committed burglaries. They’ve got previous arrests, incarceration for that. So this is just a long series. We know they’re locked up for two years now. We know they’ll come back to society. If they don’t rehabilitate themselves, then we can anticipate they’ll continue on the crime trend. So it’s important for the people, when they see something, to call. We have the police that can respond. We need the people to work with the police to make it a safe community. So to all of the heroes for their work that they did, let’s hear it one more time. Congratulations to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Alarcon, your next presentation.
Morning, Madam President, members. As you know, once a month, I recognize organizations that are doing good things to make our young people safer. And today, I am recognizing the Tarzana Treatment Centers for their program to reduce smoking in young people. And they’ve implemented a program in my district that I thought was commendatory, and I wanted to present to you, not only to honor them and give them recognition, but to also inform you about this situation that we have with regard to illegal sales of tobacco in our community. First of all, let me tell you a little bit about Tarzana Treatment Center. Since 1972, Tarzana Treatment Center has provided high-quality, affordable behavioral health care and treatment services in Los Angeles to youth, adults, and families. Services include drug addiction prevention and treatment, mental health, housing, HIV/AIDS services, medical care, domestic violence intervention, anger management, and community education services. They are licensed in California, accredited by the Joint Commission on Accreditation of Healthcare Organizations, with nine locations in the San Fernando Valley, Antelope Valley, and in Long Beach. Tarzana Treatment Center is a major recipient of federal and state government contracts that benefit the children and families in our city. So today, I am pleased to honor them for their work to reduce smoking in young people and underage cigarette Protecting children and keeping them safe means helping them make positive choices. We, as a city and as parents, cannot underestimate the impact of underage tobacco use that our society has. Tobacco use in the U.S. kills over 42,000 people annually and is the single most preventable cause of death. Smoking costs the nation about $23 billion a year in the form of lost productivity from mortality, and costs about $72 billion a year in healthcare costs. I know I’m preaching to the choir here, except perhaps one or two of you that might take a puff every once in a while, but hopefully, that will end as well. The truth of the matter is that it is illegal to sell tobacco to minors. So Tarzana Treatment Center, it created a tobacco control project. The tobacco control project mission is to reduce the number of young people who start smoking by focusing on reducing kids’ access to cigarettes. The program, which focused on the 7th Council District, can be a model for other districts, and I hope you will use it. How does it work? First of all, the organization used trained youth volunteers from various high schools, then conducted youth purchase surveys with a total of 196 currently licensed tobacco retailers in the 7th Council District. The youth were supervised by adult volunteers, and they attempted to purchase tobacco products from the merchants. After the initial operation, the task force revealed that 20% of the licensed tobacco retailers in the 7th District were willing to sell tobacco products to minors. Those merchants were then targeted for tobacco education, and including citizen citation for their willingness to sell tobacco to a minor. Obviously, it is illegal to sell tobacco to minors. This approach, however, is an educational approach. These providers of tobacco, tobacco to minors, were not cited legally. They were, the first effort was to educate them. So the citizen citations were courtesy reminders about law, about the law, and not real fines that, according to law, can range from $50 to $6,000 and 30 days, or 30 days in jail. If the citizen citation were forcible actions, this would have generated $1,000 to $120,000 in fines. After the citizen citations and merchant education intervention, the task force conducted a second round of youth purchase surveys and documented a decrease from 20% to 6% in illegal sales to minors, with only one of the retailers who sold previously to a minor doing so again. Remember, that was about 30 vendors who sold to minors in the first go-round, and only one in the second go-round. So they got the message, and this program works. As a result, it’s my pleasure to recognize their efforts. But more importantly, let me say that we are going to have, with Tarzana Treatment Center, we’re going to have a community meeting in the 7th Council District at the Sepulveda Recreation Center in Panorama City, and I hope the community will come out. We’ll be joined by the Tarzana Treatment Centers and the Office of the City Attorney to conduct community education forum on tobacco control and illegal sales to minors. But more than that, whether you get funded or not, my office will be dedicated to making this part of their agenda. And so, we hope to continue to work with you, if only on a volunteer basis, but to organize groups of young people and adults to participate in keeping the message, not just about the sales, but going into the schools on a regular basis to tell kids why it’s bad to smoke. So I want to thank you so much for putting this effort together and for having success, and for focusing, obviously, in the 7th Council District. First of all, let me say thank you to the- First of all, let me say thank you to the CEO, Scott Taylor Albert Senala, who's the COO, for their vision and leadership on health and social issues in general in the San Fernando Valley. Maury Weiner, of course, former deputy mayor under Mayor Bradley and friend for many, many years. He is their administrator of public policy. The Office of City Attorney, Tobacco Enforcement Program and School Safety Prosecutor Program, this program works. We want to thank them. So first of all, let me recognize the director of this program, Jose Salazar, who since 1988 has worked in the substance abuse, HIV/AIDS, and mental health fields as a counselor, health educator, community organizer, researcher, and administrator. He really directed this program, and we really have to applaud him for his leadership on this effort. Thank you.
On behalf of Tarzana Treatment Centers and the San Fernando Valley Tobacco Control Project staff, I really want to thank Councilman Richard Aberklon for, and his staff, for this very wonderful recognition. Thanks also to the Office of the L.A. City Attorney Tobacco Enforcement Program, which during the last two years has really provided us with much valuable feedback in terms of work that we're doing. Thanks to California State University of Northridge, and in particular, Dr. Young, who opened up her classes to this project and allowed us to recruit youth from those classes to help us implement the youth prevention surveys. And then, of course, I also want to thank our current funder, the State Department of Health Services Tobacco Control Section, which has the foresight to fund projects like this and others in our community to help reduce and prevent the use of tobacco by all individuals, but particularly our minors. Over the last two years, this project has provided tobacco prevention education to over 60 high school students in the San Fernando Valley. In addition, we involved two Public Health CSUN classes, which assisted us in the YPS process. Each received a semester's worth of community service learning credit for their wonderful effort. Through this innovative partnership, we actively involve youth in the design and in the implementation of the actual project. So we were able to go in and, in a sense, conduct mock purchase attempts with 100% of the licensed vendors in District 7. As has already been shared with you, the project was able to demonstrate that despite existing laws prohibiting the sale of tobacco products to minors, an estimated 20% of our licensed vendors in District 7 were willing to break the law, risk citations, and possibly even have their license revoked. Given the devastated effects of tobacco use, the negative consequences of the addiction to nicotine, the multiple years of lost productivity and expense associated with this habit, 20% willing to sell is just not acceptable. We should do everything in our power to eliminate even one additional minor having access to tobacco. So towards this goal, we really invite all the districts to initiate a campaign of conducting compliance checks with 100% of all licensed tobacco vendors and really providing merchant education on an ongoing basis. Our project has demonstrated that when you combine these two activities, you really are able to make a significant impact. In our case, we went from 20% to 6% willing to sell. So from our end, the continuation of the San Fernando Valley Tobacco Project is critical. As an agency, we are committed to maintaining the reductions that we've achieved in District 7. So whether through funding or no funding, we want to continue working with you, even if it is on a voluntary basis, because if we don't keep doing that, all those gains that we've made, I have no doubt that that rate will jump right back up this upcoming year. So given that, we really invite you to partner with District 7, to partner with us in providing and ensuring that 100% of our licensed tobacco vendors adhere to the law and refuse to provide tobacco products to even one more minor in our community. Thank you very much.
And I think by Mr. Weston's intent look, that he may be the first to ask for help in these service areas. Let me say that this program is a cost-effective way to send a positive message without having to legally enforce the law, but it has probably a better impact in terms of the result, having the vendors reduce their practice of selling to minors. So first, let me recognize a couple of other people. Clarita Lanticon is the PhD and project evaluator who really analyzed the data for this program, and we want to thank her for her participation in this. But where the rubber meets the road is with the health educators. These are the people that actually educate not only the vendors, but also the kids that are volunteering and the adults who are volunteering. So we want to recognize the health educator, two of them, Olga Strauss.
Wakeaway.
Olga Strauss Wakeaway, I hope I said that correctly, and Lea Yevdosen. Apparently, to be a health educator, you have to have a name that's very difficult to pronounce in English, but these two people were the central theme. I only hope that each and every council office identify a deputy to be responsible for the reduction of tobacco and its impact in our neighborhoods. And if that were the case, we could have these kinds of results across the city. So with that, I want to thank again Tarzana Treatment Center for their tremendous work, and we wish them well with regard to their application for future grants. But as you can see, it doesn't take a lot of legwork, or it doesn't take a lot of grants to make this program work. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. Our next presentation will be from Council District 2, Ms. Grul.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and to my colleagues. Today, I am honored to pay tribute, really to a true humanitarian and my friend, Rachel Andres. And I'm proud to recognize Rachel for her work with Jewish World Watch for their transformational efforts in improving human rights, economic development, and the environment for thousands of people living across Africa. But first, we must recognize the people who are responsible for bringing Rachel Andres to us in the project. The Jewish World Watch Women's Committee originally conceived of the solar cooker concept and sought the individual to bring it to fruition. That person was Rachel Andres. I'd like to introduce members of the Jewish World Watch Women's Committee to you. Sheila Wasserman, Sivia Schwartz, Diana Buckhens, I don't think Abby's here yet, Karen Beckendorfer, Ben Tisch, Amy Corin, Linda Dorfman, if I can read, Norfman, and Neoma Haviv. Sorry, they're writing here. They didn't do a very job with that, so. Rachel directs the Jewish World Watch Solar Cooker Project in refugee camps across Kenya, Ethiopia, and Chad. Rachel's vast efforts have significantly reduced the risk of violence towards women and girls across Africa. Made of just cardboard and aluminum foil, solar cookers can be hand-assembled to quickly convert sunlight into heat. Traditionally, women must walk miles to collect firewood for traditional cooking fires, since the region is devoid of vegetation. During their search for wood, firewood, they are vulnerable to attack, and Jewish World Watch's solar cookers reduce the vulnerability by decreasing the need for frequent firewood collection. The decrease in violence towards women is a true testament to the combined efforts and impact of Jewish World Watch and Rachel's actions. Since the launch of this just less than two years ago, the risk of violence has reduced dramatically for over 5,000 families through an 86% reduction in the number of journeys away from the safety of the camp. That is truly amazing. Beyond the security benefits of Jewish World Watch's ingenuity, Rachel personally managed the onsite manufacturing of solar cookers, providing female refugees with a new skill and opportunity to generate income for themselves and for their families. Additionally, solar cookers have also improved women's health by minimizing time spent cooking over fire and have aided to slow deforestation. Rachel's commitment has helped raise over $1 million to provide refugees with monthly allotments of uncooked food and solar cookers. Really, we feel that Rachel's efforts and Jewish World Watch have really been an example of how a straightforward humanitarian idea and something that seems very simple can have a pervasive impact on tens of thousands of families. Her leadership and breadth of effort to inspire compassion and social justice and efforts to collaborate and seek really further peace in the region. So her outreach has not only been across the world, but also here locally. She's conducted community ventures for the Breed Street Shul Project in Boyle Heights. She's promoted and raised funds for the Museum of Polish Jews. She coordinated the Cancer Genetics Health Hope in the Jewish Family, a community and leadership conference sponsored by the USC Norris Comprehensive Cancer Center, Hadassah, Southern California, and the Jewish Federation. And she also helped develop the leadership training and curriculum for the Advanced Leadership Seminar of the Jewish Federation Valley Alliance. She has had so much impact on this city and across the world. And recently, she was acknowledged, the reason we are here today. She received a very, very special prize. This year, she received the 2008 Charles Bronfman Prize for visionary humanitarian efforts in the solar cooker project, again affecting tens of thousands of families living across Africa. There are many other awards that she has received. The Hall of Fame Award by the Cult Awareness Network, the Hannah's Daughter Young Leadership Award by the National Council of Jewish Women. She is someone who I've had the pleasure of knowing because her husband and I served on the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council some 30-plus years ago, I think. And I was able to, you know, really have the opportunity to get to know Rachel as a friend and as a parent, but even more importantly now with her humanitarian efforts. And the Bronfman Award is one of those extraordinary awards that, it's a very selective process. It's very competitive, and Rachel received that award. There was a wonderful intimate dinner here recognizing her, but even more so, a great event in New York that many of the people behind me were able to attend with her. And so, we thought it appropriate, Rachel, that we would have the entire city council and the mayor and the comptroller and the city attorney to sign this to recognize you for all of the things that you have done, particularly here in Los Angeles. We're proud that you are from Los Angeles, but that your efforts reach across the entire world and have saved lives and made people's lives better. So I'd ask all of you if you would join me in congratulating Rachel Andres with the 2008 Bronfman Award and what she's done for the city of Los Angeles and across the country. Congratulations, Rachel.
Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Weston.
Thank you, Madam President. Rachel, congratulations. What you're doing is so meaningful throughout the planet. You know, we say never again, never again, never again, and we know what's happening right now in Darfur. And the fact that you shine the light on it and you let the world's conscience be aware of it is absolutely critical. And that solar gizmo that can boil the water, you know, will give some relief to some people. It's a practical way of injecting yourself into a horrific situation. And I want to thank you. I want to thank the Federation. I want to thank everybody who has taken this human rights crisis to the public awareness thing. It is an embarrassment. It is a shame that we can get engaged in all kinds of things on the earth, but when we see people literally put into an area, it's a concentration camp of reality, you know, tens of thousands of people have already died in that spot. I would love to see troops go over there and rescue these people from that hell and insanity, which they should have done with Rwanda before that bloodbath took place. But just pricking the conscience of the planet is a huge plus. Bless you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Weston.
Thank you, Madam President, and members, and Rachel. We haven't had the pleasure to meet, but I too wanted to rise and congratulate you for all of the wonderful things that you've done. But because of you, I had a very special moment today. I was afforded the opportunity to meet your daughter and indicated to her that I loved her hair. And she informed me that she had just had it shampooed, and that's why it was poofy. So I think that she's definitely a leader in the making, and I just had a delightful conversation with her, and I want her to know that she made my morning. So anyway, congratulations to you.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I, you know, as Rachel prepares to speak, you know, we always talk about how one person can make a difference. And Rachel is the epitome of one person making a difference. She went to Chad with both Janice Resnick and Sivia, and really, you know, that was a very dangerous mission, but there to help the women there of Chad and Darfur. And so, it's my pleasure to present the certificate to you, Rachel, for all of your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grul.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. I will be brief, but all that you have done for the city of Los Angeles and for Darfur, and you and your husband both, and talking about the solar cooker project on the air and other places, has really been important for the project. And also, you helping in the nomination process for the Bronfman Prize, I'm so appreciative. And as we know, no one person can do anything. So Jewish World Watch, an organization of 60 synagogues in Southern California, has really done what the other council member said. We took to heart the words "never again" and said, "This is happening again. A genocide is happening in Darfur. We've got to do something about it." And the Women's Committee of Jewish World Watch, this is a, many members from the committee are here, really came up with this amazing idea to bring these solar cookers and help the women not only use the cookers, but actually make them and earn an income in the refugee camp where they're relatively safe as they stay in the camp, but if they leave to collect the firewood, that's where the problem lies. So this has been a joint effort, clearly not one person. And I think it's important that today happens to be World Refugee Day and that we recognize that there are, 2.5 million people have been killed, but there are still a quarter million refugees from the conflict. And anyone that wants to go outside there, there's more information about World Refugee Day and the refugees. And just thank you very much, and thank everyone here for all of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Councilmember Jan Perry. Special acknowledgment.
Just a quick acknowledgment. We recognize our former councilman, colleague, and friend, Nate Holden.
Mr. Nate Holden.
Why don't you stand up, Mr. Holden, so everybody knows you're here. Nate Holden is here in the front row of the council chamber.
Mr. Call it special, Mr. Nate Holden.
And I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize him, and he had his birthday yesterday. I'll leave it to him to say which one it was. But on behalf of the entire city council, I have a resolution that's floating around here somewhere, getting signed. Okay, we'll find it in just a second, but to recognize him on his birthday and to present him with a resolution and to say congratulations and very happy birthday.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 21, is it 20 and 21 or 21 and 22?
It's 2 and 21.
2 and 21, fourth with, please. Madam Clerk, if we could do a roll call, please? It doesn't appear that we have a quorum at this time.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weezar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti.
Well, the question is, some of those names called are not here. And if we don't have a quorum, Madam Clerk?
If you would let, before we, if we don't have a quorum, before we disperse, would you allow Mr. Holden to just say a few words?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry and family members.
Can I be, before the councilman speaks, can I say a few words or?
Will we indulge Mr. Weston in that, Mr. Holden? It's Mr. Holden's pleasure, Mr. Weston.
I just want to just say to my mentor and former boss, happy birthday. And Jan, I believe that the councilman is 39 and holding. And I mean, he's been that age since I first met him. But I never drew... But I never dreamed that when I came to work for you that I would be sitting in the chair in the district that you represented for sixteen great years. And I just want you to know that it was an honor for me to be afforded the opportunity. On your behalf, I must have delivered two thousand certificates, so it was an honor for me to sign one for you. So happy birthday. And I tell you, the line is thirty-nine and holding, but happy birthday, chief.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Holden, you want to do some push-ups on the floor like you did last time? I remember those push-ups.
I'm a day older. In any case, it's like a family here to me that in one way or another, I've served with ten, eleven members of the council as a councilperson as well. And I was able to add to the information that you and I have acquired because I served with another family body. You had guys like Bernardi and you had guys like Gilbert Lindsay and you had a number of them who were here who shared information with me, institutional knowledge and memory, which allowed me to go on and do the job that I was able to do here. And before I left, there were a number of you who were new, Alakhan and all, I was able to seriously try to share that information with each and every one of you and get you in a position where you can do the best job I know you can and have been doing for the people of this city. I do want to say one other thing, however, that there were two people, two groups of people honored here this morning. And one were an Aztecs. And one guy named Kenny Han told me, he says, "You know, the best job," I'm a supervisor, "but the best job in this city and in this county is being in the fire department. You work two days a week and you get a chance to serve the public and you can do other things on the side." And the other thing he asked me to do is is that when you're in the Senate, if people burglarize people home, make it a mandatory jail sentence. And when you honored him, Mr. Zine, the people who helped the law enforcement, the reason why he went to jail for two years is because the idea that Kenny came up with, "Rob a home, go to jail." And so, you know, that information was shared with me and I was able to respond to the request and other information helped me to be the councilperson that I was able to be here. Now, I want to thank each and every one of you for what you've done for me. In fact, I stopped counting, but at least you recognized there was another day in my life and then I had a birthday and I thank you for coming, having me come down and accept this certificate once again. I love you all, always will. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Holden. Thank you. Next, Mr. Alakhan. You wanted some comments of Mr. Holden? You pushed a button. Mr. Rosendahl? Mr. Rosendahl, you pushed a button?
I'd like to ask if he could get back to the, so we can see him in the light here. You know, one of the things that I want to ask you as now sitting here where you've been, you called a lot of things special. And I know that some of your colleagues were irritated by that. Would you explain that strategy on why you did that?
Well, I tell you why. That was just, again, the guy I worked for, I learned from his name is Kenny Han, he called a lot of things special. And as you work for the people, you want to know, have the people know what you're doing for them at that particular time and why the members of the board would take a position that it would take. And the same thing here, we have a lot of discussion in the committee, but you never get a chance to discuss it in the council floor if you say one through twenty, twenty-two, thirty, thirty through forty. And then you say, "Well, what happened at City Council today?" I think that some of those items are critical items and need to be called special for the purpose of not only disseminating information to the public, but certainly it would prick some thought in the minds of another councilperson that, "Hey, what about that? I didn't hear that." And they start raising more questions about it. And people become more enlightened. And then, of course, you carry on the institutional knowledge and the memory. So I did that from time to time, afford the other members of my staff an opportunity to share the knowledge about what was going on and that particular issue because they were critical.
Yeah, and you know, I admire you for that because when I did my television show, it was to inform and connect people so they could understand what's going on. I get pretty tired around here when we say, "Open the roll, close the votes, tabulate the votes." And we don't even know what we're voting on sometimes because it wasn't in the committee we were a member of. And so we trust. And that is, you know, good on one level, but every now and then to call things special where we weren't part of the process in the committee does allow us to interact. And I appreciate that lesson you've taught all of us here around the horseshoe.
Just today, on the way down, I talked to former staff person, Kemi Massey, and her knows who she is. And her husband worked for me before he passed away. But she said, "I don't watch the council anymore." I said, "Well, turn it on today." I says, "Why?" She said, "Because they don't say, they're not saying anything." Not just she didn't say you're not doing anything, but they don't say anything. And so I'm sure they do from time to time. And when they're talking, she's not listening because she doesn't have the TV on. But I think that it's a good, it's an indicator that you might want to do that more often for the point of letting people know what you're doing in more detail.
Right. Thank you so much.
He raised a question I would not have mentioned.
Mr. Alakhan?
Right, right.
Mr. Alakhan?
Having had the opportunity to serve with Mr. Holden on this council, I first want to clarify for Mr. Rosendahl that I believe the number of specials introduced by Mr. Holden dramatically increased after the implementation of Channel Thirty-five. And that was a very, that was a very impressive strategy as well. But let me tell you, Nate Holden always added something special to the debate. He always had a perspective that was rooted in a working-class history and a knowledge of his community. There were a lot of people who came around trying to take you out of office, who thought that they knew your district better than you did. And every single time, you beat them. And I think that's because more than calling specials and meeting, more than voting, knowing a lot of stuff, even some of my motions maybe once in a while, he understood how to deliver city services to his district. And that's why he did such a great job. The one thing I do remember about Mr. Holden was when he was retiring from the council and I stood up and was thanking him so much for chairing the Transportation Committee at the time. And I thanked him because we were able to put in some twenty, twenty or twenty-five traffic signals in my district. And I said, "Mr. Holden, I want to thank you for managing that effort." And he looked at the general manager of transportation and said, "You did what?" But I think it focused on the idea that he knew that the voters want city services. They want their streets cleaned. They want their lights to work. They want their trees trimmed. All those things that you learn from Supervisor Han. And I'll tell you that it was a pleasure working with Mr. Holden. He was always available to advise a young council member or an old council member. He was always, even if he disagreed with you, he was respectful. And there was an old protocol that he adhered to. But number one, he took care of his district. And number two, he respected his colleagues. And so for that, I want to say thank you, continued success. You look better than ever. And I hope I look as good as you when I'm, when I'm forty-two, like you. But congratulations. We love you too, Mr. Holden.
Thank you. Just thank you for the comments, Mr. Alakhan. Let me just tell you that there were tough elections and runoffs, but it was Richard, guys like you, Richard and Richard Ellatori and so on, Michael Hernandez, who stood by me as a family member and said, "We support your reelection." My colleagues came to my aid and they protected me in those close elections. And we had that kind of relationship amongst each one another. And I, I'm sure that you'll continue in that spirit and hopefully you will. But thank you once again for all you've done for me and Jan Perry for, who's a Gemini also.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holden. We'll call that special and call the roll. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next is item number five, and that was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, number five.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'd like the CLA to come on up on this one. Just an informational, first I want to thank Mr. Wesson, who is focusing on this issue in his committee. And just in the keeping with the Nate Holden comment there about letting people understand what's going on, we would like to make this a moment. I'd like to just say this, and Jerry, I want you to tell me if I'm right on this. This is a strategy to start going forward with potentially implementing a program similar to the District of Columbia's Tenants Opportunity to Purchase Act. It's called TOPA Program in the city of Los Angeles. The TOPA Program gives renters the right of first refusal when a rental building is converted to condos. This program requires city staff assistance and city-backed loans to tenants to help tenants purchase units. Both of these elements would cost money to implement, and obviously, we are in a budget crisis, but we want to raise this issue. Washington, D.C. currently has eighteen staffers in a $1.8 million department to provide technical assistance needed to implement the TOPA Program. Los Angeles, obviously, is much larger than Washington, D.C., so a program in L.A. would obviously be more expensive. However, what this program includes is technical assistance to inform and educate the tenants of their rights, organized tenant associations, finding outside advocacy to help foster the potential transaction, providing assistance to raise the necessary funds, retaining lawyers and real estate agents, aligning tenants with property managers to maintain the building upon acquisition and provide loans to assist in the purchase. Los Angeles currently lacks sufficient lenders to accommodate giving loans to low-income renters seeking to purchase. These factors led to the creation in D.C. of the Tenant Opportunity Purchase Act. Because there, obviously, they have a severe shortage of rental units. They have at least sixty thousand households in need of housing assistance, a loss of rental housing due to condo conversions, which adversely impacts low-income and elderly people, and new conversion controls that were required to offset previous controls that were ineffective at preserving affordable housing. So we obviously want the council to approve this, to explore this, to see if we can do something about it because our tenants' rights really aren't a prominent concern as developers go into situations and do condo conversions. But it is something that has to be focused on, and I really appreciate this going through the process. And I look forward to Mr. Wesson's committee on housing grappling with it and seeing where they go. Mr. CLA, did I outline it properly?
You certainly did, Councilman. The concept is to pool the resources of the renters and when a building is being sold, to provide them the opportunity to use those pooled resources with technical assistance to purchase the building. And you're absolutely right, city attorney would need to come back with exactly how this could be structured in California, whether the Ellis Act has any impact on it, funding would need to be identified. But we do recommend that we proceed with putting the program together and coming back to you for approval.
And in your vision of this, as we deal with this and go through the committee process, would it be appropriate to create a task force of some sort that would include various elements of this? Or what's your sensing of what strategy needs to happen?
I think at this point, Councilman, I would suggest getting the material information back that you need to get, exactly how it could be structured and all of the elements that would have to be put together to actually initiate a program. And then I think it would be a very wise idea to establish a task force to actually implement.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Ms. Han, followed by Mr. Parks.
Thank you. Obviously, this is an idea, I mean, I believe this idea, the time has come. I mean, we hear stories all the time about tenants who are feeling powerless and victims. You know, people buy their buildings and then they're thrown out on the streets. This seems like a great opportunity to empower people to take control of their lives, their destinies, and enter into the ability to purchase the real estate themselves. Last week, we, or the week before, we had a nonprofit group standing here where we were approving them purchasing a building, and it was the same concept. I do feel, though, that there's a little angst on the part of some stakeholders in us moving forward too quickly. I actually would be in favor of establishing a task force now to maybe even help you get information about how this could work in Los Angeles as well as moving forward to the implementation. I mean, I see this task force being Housing Department, Apartment Association, CRA, planning, Realtor Groups, housing advocates, people who would actually sit around and help us shape the ordinance. I mean, because where I'm going to is to have an ordinance in the state of Los Angeles that actually allows this, to help us shape the ordinance. We know Washington, D.C. is doing this. Maybe this group takes a trip to Washington, D.C. and really spends some time gathering information to help us shape our ordinance. So I would actually like to see a working group of stakeholders kind of help push us along to craft an ordinance that fits L.A. So I would actually like to see that put together maybe in about thirty days and then maybe another sixty days, have you come back with a report on kind of what our ordinance will look like. Because at this point, to ask the city attorney to draft the ordinance is not usually how we do stuff. We usually decide the kind of ordinance we want the city attorney to draft. We pretty much tell the city attorney, "This is the kinds of things we want to see in the ordinance." So I'd rather us gather information and shape our ordinance to fit L.A. So that's what I would like to request. And I don't know if that fits with what you're saying, Bill.
You know, reacts to this as well. And I'm not too sure of what all the elements are of a task force, but I totally agree with you that before we do anything like an ordinance, we need to create the proper mix of people in a task force and, you know, working with the Committee of Housing to work this in the right direction and come back with a set of suggestions of what we do next. I think it's a great idea, Ms. Han, with what you're saying.
Okay. And maybe the Chair of Housing could...
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jerry, I would just like to make sure, we had the discussion a while back on condo conversions. One of the things I thought came out of that discussion with the Housing Department was to look at things such as this, that particularly as it dealt with conversions, that we have the ability to give people the first option of buying the place that they currently were leasing or renting. And so I would just like to make sure as we're studying this, that we ensure that the material and the work that's been done on condo conversion gets merged in because we're almost dealing with identical subjects. If you're selling the building, they get right of first refusal, or if you are converting to condos, you get some ability to purchase. And particularly, it was intriguing on the issue of condo conversion and the fact that we'd be paying people $17,000 to move, that is, whether that money could be converted into their down payment to assist them in purchase. So I just ask that whatever housing is done on that original discussion about condo conversion be included in this study so that we can get the whole picture.
Sure.
Mr. Alakhan?
Yes, members, I'm an absolute believer that one of the biggest problems in the city of Los Angeles is the high proportion of rental versus homeownership. Because I believe that to build a middle-class community, you have to have an asset to rely on when a tragedy or circumstances require you to use that asset to get through that problem. In some communities, if you own a home, for example, and one of your family members has a drug problem, many times, they will use the collateral from their house to be able to get the services necessary to help their family member. Well, if you don't have that kind of collateral in those kinds of exigent circumstances, you can't respond. And so I think we should do everything possible to reduce the proportion of rental, increase the homeownership, to provide that asset-building direction that we need in Los Angeles. Los Angeles as a whole has a homeownership ratio of between thirty-one and forty percent, depending on which study you look at. But most urban planners will tell you that the homeownership rate for a healthy, a healthy community is somewhere between fifty-six percent and sixty percent. This is a critical problem. This is a critical problem. If we can accomplish this, Mr. Rosendahl, I believe that we get to the heart of that issue. But I also want to tell you, and I, I talked to Ms. Gruhl, because after the earthquake, we, I think we did some of this stuff. And I, I know that we did it for condo conversions. I don't know, I believe we might have done it for an apartment complex on Astoria in Silmar. But I know that we worked with HUD to allow owners to purchase their, their buildings and their, their apartments, so that they could get past the damage of the earthquake. And, and I, I hope that we can do more on, on that score. And so, I commend you for, for bringing it in. But the bottom line is, unless we, as a city, create a real goal to increase the homeownership proportion in our city, I believe we will continue to slide down in terms of the challenges we face as a city.
Ms. Gruhl.
I just wanted to add, Mr. Alakon, you know, brought the attention, we did some creative things. I don't think you were here, Jerry, in 1990, were you here in 1994?
No.
Creative things with the assistance of HUD, particularly when we were looking at, those were project-based or Section 8 kinds of things, or there was assistance that the city had provided for rebuilding and ways in which, so, and Mercedes Marquez came into HUD after that, but had some understanding of that, and then as becoming, you know, the Housing Director. And I think that, as Mr. Alakon mentioned, the importance of homeownership, I mean, it has been demonstrated over the years, the homeownership rate, and where cities have a higher homeownership rate, there is a whole sense of equality of life issues, commitment to the neighborhood, a feeling of that they are part of that community when they own. It's that American dream, and there are benefits to that. So, I look forward to your report back, but we might look at some of the programs that HUD may have offered post, you know, 1994 earthquake, which, you know, we relieved some of the regulations that sometimes hamper these kinds of programs during that period of time. And I, I think there are some lessons learned from that that might be able to be used for this project as well. So, thank you. Thank you for bringing to my attention, Ms. Alakon.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, anything else?
So, I ask for a verbal motion.
Verbal motion by Ms. Han?
To create a task.
To create a task force on this matter. And let's take a, Mr. Miller, is that satisfactory with you?
And I'll work with him to give.
Ms. Han will work with you on that?
We'll work with her on, on the membership of that, and absolutely.
And I'll work with you on the stakeholders.
So that, on the stakeholders for that?
Yep.
So, we need a second for that amendment by Ms. Han?
Mr. Rosendahl, are you going to second it?
Mr. Rosendahl, are you going to second the task force?
Yeah. The membership of the task force needs to be worked out.
Right.
And I look forward to the leadership of Mr. Wesson's committee in making that happen.
Okay, so that amendment's accepted, it's seconded, so now we have that matter before us with the amendment. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Mr. President, public comment still needs to be done.
All right, let's do public comment.
So, everything's good? City Attorney, let me know.
Okay, public comment. Walter Bechtel? Walter Bechtel?
Yeah, I guess I'm just up here to reiterate what I, what I was trying to tell you. I don't think maybe I make myself very clear. I'm trying to tell the city, if you want to stop gangs, you got to quit giving them the seal of approval. If you keep having gangster rap, et cetera, predominate the, the radio stations, and somebody like me comes in here, I'm trying to tell you, that's not just where it begins. It begins with illegal wiretapping and eavesdropping. And I tried to tell your police commission back in October of 2006 about these things going on. I was told to talk to a detective there, Detective Dawson, and he said he would get back to me. Nobody has gotten back to me. I just get laughed at every time I come up here to say something. You're giving awards to people that, that turn in people for, for theft. I think you need to understand that eavesdropping and wiretapping and theft of intellectual property is theft, too. If you want to see my credentials, it's, I just graduate from UCSD. I got all kinds of credentials. The people of my, my family have always run the venues of this country, the theaters and racetracks and everything were all created and founded by, by people. These people know who we are, who I am. I, I'm trying to turn somebody in here. And you, you just think it's a joke or something? These are the things that cause the problems of your city. And then, when I come up here to say something, you, you think it's a joke or something.
Thank you, sir. Noel Weiss, please. Noel Weiss. Noel Weiss.
He's there.
The time is running and you are walking. Thank you, Noel Weiss.
Good afternoon. Today's an anniversary day. I wanted to acknowledge the efforts of Mr. Wesson. One year ago today, the passage by the City Council of the $5 million, which was, was basically transferred from the CRA account, Community Block Grant Funds, to the Housing Department for the benefit of tenants. Mr. Wesson was the primary mover of that. And I think it basically makes a point relative to financing some of these purchases. I think it's important that the City Council become a can-do council and not a cannot-do council. When we have motions that basically ask the staff to come up with reasons to do something, and then we end up with a list of reasons why it can't be done, and then we have one citizen, and the people watching should understand, this $5 million wasn't from some Latham and Watkins law firm lobbying. This was a individual, Chuck Tennant, on his own, not connected, that basically managed to convey to Mr. Wesson the need, and Mr. Wesson basically came through. There are dollars there, people, to be able to do this. Where there's a will, there's a way. But I think it's really important that the City Council begin to communicate to the public the reasons why things can and should be done, instead of finding all kinds of reasons why they cannot be done. That's why we have the Lincoln Places of the World, that's why we have Ms. Gruhl's district riddled with fallow land with no, with the worst of all possible worlds. It's time to begin to move forward on this in a concrete, constructive, cooperative way. It can be done. You people are the policymakers. It's your responsibility. Start being positive, start being optimistic. A positive expectation can lead to a positive result. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Next speaker, Clyde Nemus.
Clyde.
Clyde Nemus, I'm sorry, Clyde Williams, Clyde Williams. Is that you, Clyde Williams? Second call?
Clyde Williams is on.
Third call? Clyde Williams is not here. How about Rick Nightingale in the Valley? Rick Nightingale in the Valley?
Yeah, thank you, Rick Nightingale. Boy, I think they're really emotional out here in the Valley Wednesday, and I was one of them. But, you know, this is regarding the, okay, like, the organizations come up and speak. I think it's very rude for them to take way over the amount of time that is allotted, like all of us other, like the dog and that, and we speak, we get two minutes, and they keep going on and on and on. I just wanted to bring that up. I think they're very rude to extend it, and they think that they're entitled to it. Another thing is, is that you people are a lot responsible for not having any money, like for the schools. I realize you don't have control with the school board, but like, I remember very distinctly that when we voted for the lottery money, that it would not go for any wages going into their general fund or nothing. It would be for things like computers and so forth for the schools. And this would be a very good, for instance, that to keep the schools open after school for lottery money. But they took it and they embezzled it, and that's all it was, embezzlement, taking it out and says, "We can do anything we want with it, and you people are the ones that make the laws." That could have stepped in and says, "No, you're not," but you let them get away with it. That they took it and put it in general fund, and they turn around and, I know for a fact I was at, and a principal turned, I said, "I'm going to spend the money any way I want." And he gave it to, to teachers. I think that was very poorly a deal, and you don't hear nothing about it. And another thing, too, is that I think you did a very bad thing the other day about the airport thing, that for one councilman, didn't realize he didn't get the memos, and you canceled it, and a lot of people spoke on it, a lot of people were interested in it, and then you changed it to another memo. It wasn't a, it's a big thing to a lot of people, but it, it's just a, an opinion from you people. And I live around the Van Nuys Airport, and I don't need no more noise around there, and it was up to you to make the vote at that particular day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Voger in the Valley.
Well, I know where he's coming from, because I used to live around there, too, many years ago, and I feel for the folks there. What I'm talking about today is this parcel tax on the, for the gang programs is absolutely immoral, unethical. We have Proposition 13 to stop you people from doing this kind of strategy. You need to raise the money in other ways, like, you know, like the lottery money should be used for programs to, for, for gang prevention and intervention and suppression, not going to the taxpayers for property taxpayers. The property owners shouldn't have to put the bill for the rest of the city. Everybody should be participating in this. So, this is immoral and ethical, and I'm challenging you people to vote no on this parcel tax. I don't want you to vote for eight votes to put it on the ballot. This is on, this is a terrible, unethical, and very immoral thing to do. And you people just don't care about the public. And all you come here is just do what you can to tax and tax and tax. When Howard, Howard Jarvis came here, he said, "Enough is enough. I can't take it anymore. I'm not going to take these taxes anymore." That enough is enough. And he went and put Proposition 13 in to stop you varmints. And, and I wish he would say something about that, about Nate Holden, because you're the only one on the City Council that spoke about keep protecting the property tax owners. You are here, hear me, which could tell your comrades here to vote against it. Don't support this kind of thing. I support the, the program, don't get me wrong. I just want to have the funding done honestly and with accountability, because I know that it's not going to be accountable. Please do not support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I've been informed that it looks like our quorum is gone. Can we have a verbal roll call, please?
Alakon. Han. Mr. Weisar and Mr. Labange is excused. Parks?
I'm here.
Perry.
I'm here.
Mr. Reyes is not present. Councilmember Rosendahl?
I'm here.
Mr. Smith is excused. Councilmember Weiss is excused to leave at 12 noon. Councilmember Wesson? Councilmember Zine?
Here. Madam Clerk, how many do we have present?
That leaves, that leaves 10. I'm sorry, Mr. President, it leaves nine, because Councilmember Weiss is excused at 12 noon.
So, the quorum has been broken.
Still have public calling.
Well, he's excused at noon, and it's almost noon, it's what, five minutes to noon. So, we, we have lost the quorum? Madam Clerk, correct, we've lost the quorum?
Yes, Mr. President, there is only nine members present.
All right. That concludes the meeting for today, since the quorum has been broken. This concludes the council meeting for today. Any items remaining will be continued till Tuesday. Thank you.
Mr. President, there are motions for posting a referral.
Post and referral.
Tell Jack Weiss to meet.
Post and referral. Madam Clerk?
I'm leaving.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, Items 14 and 17 are left on the desk. They'll be continued to Tuesday's council meeting.
To be continued. Are we clear?
There is no quorum, the meeting is...
Are we clear?
Oh.
Am I allowed to mention that it's World Refugee Day and there's a...
Do an announcement, sure.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, we are going to do announcements and conclude.
We're back to 10? We're back to 10? Hold on. But technically, for the moment, it's okay. Yeah, okay. That's fine, it'll be good.
Okay, this matter will then conclude the meeting for today. Mr. Cardenas, you have an announcement to make?
Yes, thank you. I just want to remind everyone that today is World Refugee Day in the City of Los Angeles, which is held on June 20th since the year 2000, so it's been eight years since they've had the World Refugee Day. And the General Assembly of the United Nations adopted and proclaimed this day World Refugee Day. Also, the City of Los Angeles is having a, a reception out in the Rotunda, so if people would like to stop by and learn more about World Refugee Day, you can do so in the Rotunda of City Hall today, it's going on right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Alakon? The matter's not heard today, will be continued to Tuesday.
Members, in my presentation, I mentioned the Tobacco Control Illegal Sales to Minors program that we're going to have at the Supolvato Recreation Center. It's going to be Monday, June 23rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's a community education forum sponsored by myself and the Tarzana Treatment Center. The city attorney will be president as well. And this is to learn about how to block illegal sales of, of tobaccos to minors, but also information about cessation programs to stop smoking, and also how to prevent young people from getting into smoking. If you need more information, please call my office in Pacoima at 818-756-9115.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. Madam Clerk, we're concluded due to the lack of the quorum. This concludes the meeting, and we will return on Tuesday. Have a good weekend. Thank you.